Ms. Terry, you good? Okay. I'd like to call the Council to the Council's main order. If you'd please rise and join my colleagues and I for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Copies of the agenda are on the back table, along with listening devices if you require them, and we encourage you to sign in on the back table as well. There's a signup sheet back there to my left. Members present this evening are from City Council. Our council members Girba, CEO Rice, Lesch, Harmout, Mayor Potem Dillon, and Mayor Morrow. From city staff, we have the Acting City Manager, City Clerk, DPW Director, and Community Development Director, Adkin. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, unless there are amendments.
I'd like to make amendment to add to discussion. Board of Ethics.
Okay, so that'll come after the City Manager hiring process?
Thank you. With that, I'll move the agenda as amended, if no other changes.
Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, Mayor Potem Dillon will have some modifications when we get to the consent portion. I believe there'll be a recommendation to postpone Agenda Item 25-111, but we'll deal with that when we get to that particular agenda item. So Mr. Girba has made a motion to approve the agenda as amended, noting the one addition to the discussion portion of the agenda. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mayor Potem Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we'll proceed to public comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, make question or comment on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Those wishing to speak are requested but not required to state their name and address for the record. Before you begin your comment, please clearly state the specific agenda item you are addressing, and please note, council does not answer questions during this initial public comment period. And again, you'll have three minutes once you begin. Please make sure the green light is illuminated at the base of the microphone.
I forget to do that.
Yes.
Good afternoon. My agenda item is the City Manager position. Al Cole has served the City of Celine with dedication and integrity. Paroles as City Treasurer, Deputy City Manager, and most recently Interned City Manager have highlighted her exceptional leadership skills and commitment to our community. Under her guidance, Al has successfully brought our community together, demonstrating not only capability but also a deep sense of responsibility and care for Celine's residents. Despite these qualifications, Ms. Cole was surprisingly excluded from the finalist candidates for the permanent City Manager position. This decision by the Hiring Committee has left many in our community puzzled, particularly given Ms. Cole's proven record and the transparency for which she has always conducted her duties. With Celine at a crucial juncture in its development and growth, it is vital to have a leader who not only understands the intricacies of our local government but who has also shown unwavering dedication to public service. Al Cole provides these qualities, making her an ideal candidate for the role of City Manager. That being said, the situation regarding the City Manager position is bigger than one person. It simply brought the problems facing the city to a head. It is a symptom of an underlying issue. For the past few years, Celine's administration has been increasingly dismissive of its constituents. Our concerns fall on deaf ears. Our inquiries have met with canned answers or candorous tension. Deals are done in back rooms instead of in the daylight. This is unacceptable. When those in power repeatedly say, "Trust me, this was fair." "Trust me, everything was above board." "Trust me, I will decide for you," the people have learned to demand proof. When we ask questions, we expect answers. When we ask for clarity, we expect transparency. When we give you our trust, we expect fairness, and we expect all these things to be public. These are not accusations, these are worries and concerns of the people in this community. Ignoring them will not make them go away. You hired Ms. Cole to come into a job, to make Celine better, and she has done that. If repayment for this is denial of promotions and lack of acknowledgement, it will be hard pressed to find anyone who is willing to work with Celine government, including volunteers. Why would they put their time and effort into promoting the city if this is the environment they are met with? Poor optics can have decimating effects on some of the towns. I urge the committee and Mayor Morrow to reconsider their decision, and grant Ms. Cole the opportunity to interview and present herself to the full Council for candidacy as the permanent City Manager. I also suggest that the entire Council reflect upon how the city can make changes to earn back the trust and respect of the community. Thank you.
There are additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening. You have three minutes once you begin. Make sure the green light is illuminated at the base.
All right, thank you. I'm here to talk about the hiring, City Manager hiring position too. Good evening. For the record, my name is Mary Detling, and I serve as Executive Director of Celine Main Street. I'm here tonight to speak as someone who works closely with businesses, residents, and city staff every day, and who cares deeply about the long-term health and leadership of our community. I want to start by expressing my respect for the work that's gone into this hiring process. These decisions are difficult, and I know you are all trying to do what's best for the City of Celine. That said, I think it's equally important to show respect for the work Ms. Cole has done during her time as Acting City Manager. She has listened to downtown businesses, addressed complex and emotionally charged concerns, rebuilt communication and trust, helped clean up a dysfunctional building department that was actively discouraging new development, and pushed forward on projects like the community gathering space, all while aligning her work with the city's strategic and master plans. I've also heard concerns about staffing and internal morale. If those concerns exist, I trust that the City Council has investigated them thoroughly, but I do think it's fair to ask, are these issues rooted in resistance to accountability? Are they reactions to change? Or are they effects of a leadership style inherited from a previous administration? I don't need the answer to those questions. We don't need to know every detail, but what matters most is that council understands where these grievances come from and why. I've also heard that claims, I've also heard claims that Ms. Cole lacks emotional intelligence. I can only speak from personal and professional experience, but that has not been my observation. She's helped me navigate tough conversations with thoughtfulness and empathy, and what I've witnessed is someone who leads with care and clarity. So here's my ask tonight. If you do choose to give Ms. Cole an interview, and I sincerely hope that you do, please don't let it be performative. Give her a real chance, listen to what she has to say, because what I believe that you'll hear is someone who is deeply knowledgeable about the issues facing Celine, someone who has actively worked to improve city operations, someone who is engaged, passionate, and capable of leading both strategically and collaboratively. Lastly, I want to thank each of you for listening, not just tonight but throughout this process. Thank you for hearing the voices of our business and community members. I know this isn't easy, but how we move forward from here will shape Celine's future for all of us. Thank you.
There are additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening. Again, you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Good evening, Council. I'm Bill Gibson, and along with my wife, I own a fine print bookshop right downtown. You've all received numerous emails from me, so I'm going to try to keep this brief tonight. So I'm here to speak on the City Manager search, and my reason for coming tonight is that I would urge the Council to put forward a motion to do another round of interviews with some of the finalists that we've seen previous, and please include Acting City Manager Al Cole in those final, or those next round of interviews. Based on our observations, there were many strong candidates in that field, but none that stood out above the others, and we feel like that appears to be the case, or that appears to be the feelings of some of you as well, as we've seen comments made that we'd like to see another round of interviews with two of the candidates specifically from Mayor Morrow. Along with Ms. Cole, we would love to have each of those candidates describe what they see the future of Celine looking like and what their vision is of Celine. That's one thing that we missed in the initial rounds of interviews. That's really, that's really important stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak tonight? Then I'm going to defer to the City Clerk, because I believe we have at least one or maybe two, three written communications in which the individuals wanted their remarks right at this time. Again, we're going to maintain the three-minute time limit, so once you begin with the first email or letter, Clerk Royal, I will start the timer.
The first one is from Joanne Dent, and it says, "Dear City Council members, the Council has received numerous emails, listened to public comments, observed consistent social media posts, and now a last-minute petition, all encouraging you to include Ms. Cole as a finalist for the City Manager position. Additional closed-door sessions and delays in decision-making offer a timely opportunity to reflect on the process and the gaps that may have brought the Council to this point. As you prepare to convene this evening and make important lasting decisions, I respectfully offer the following observations. First, the interview questions were not specific, or were not especially probing, particularly in critical issues such as economic development and risk management. Despite the significance placed on the 2024 strategic plan by both the mayor and council, none of the candidates appeared familiar with it. This was evident in their follow-up questions to council, for example, asking, 'What do you see as the priorities over the next six months to a year?'" A question that could have been answered by reviewing the plan. This was a missed opportunity to ask targeted questions and assess how each candidate would approach the city's specific goals and timelines. Additionally, at least one candidate was not given equal time. Conducting all four interviews back-to-back limited the depth of discussion. Spacing them out could have allowed for more thoughtful and engaging dialogue. Second, while tours and mock department meetings can offer helpful context, staff impressions may be subjective and could unintentionally influence the process. Third, including two subordinates of the Acting Manager on the Hiring Committee introduces the potential for bias, whether intentional or not. Ms. Cole had no opportunity to respond to any negative feedback shared in closed session, whereas external candidates were not evaluated under the same conditions. This makes the process inherently unequal. Transparency and fairness are essential. Finally, public survey results, post-interview feedback, and the consultants and Hiring Committee's scoring data are all relevant components of the process and should be shared with the public. This process continues to generate concern, confusion, and a diminished confidence in this outcome. Ms. Cole has earned broad support from residents, business owners, HOAs, city employees, and local officials, based on the shared belief that she deserves the opportunity to present her vision and speak to her record. This will be one of the most consequential decisions the city will make, with long-term implications for leadership and direction of the City of Celine. If Ms. Cole is not selected, any incoming City Manager will be stepping into a row without the benefit of broad community support from the outset, making their path forward potentially more difficult. I urge you to ensure that this process is as thorough, transparent, and equitable as that Ms. Cole is given a fair opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
You may begin the second letter or email.
The second one is from Renee Fonseca. Dear Celine City Council members, I'm writing this email in support of Acting City Manager Al Cole. It is my hope and encouragement that you will consider giving Al an opportunity to interview for the full-time City Manager position. I have been a small-business owner in the City of Celine for 18 years. Al is the first city official to have come into my business to introduce herself and express a true desire to want to connect with me, to hear my thoughts on our community. This speaks, this spoke volumes to me, and for the first time, I felt that I had an important and caring voice there, and that my business mattered in this community. She furthermore started having services done in my business. As she stated, it was important to her to support our local small-business owners. As a testament to her leadership, Al has done a tremendous job bridging the gap between the City Council and the Celine Main Street organization. Additionally, she mended a longtime angst between local property owners, and she consistently shows up in support of our monthly business property, and business and property owner meetings. Furthermore, and most notably, Al has spearheaded, along with Tyler Kinley, a very necessary community space for our downtown. I strongly believe that this potential new space would add much-needed vitality to our community, and would naturally draw new business to our longstanding empty store plans. To have any changing of the guard, in my opinion, would negatively impact the strides Al has already made. I strongly feel Al Cole is positive progress that our community needs to thrive. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Okay, and give one more, too.
One more.
Okay. Begin whenever you're ready.
The last one is Celia Bellin. It says, "To the City Council members, I'm writing to express my strong support for Al Cole for the City Manager position and that she be given the opportunity to interview for the position. I've worked closely with her over the past few years, and I can say with complete confidence that she is smart, capable, professional, and committed to well-being of our community. That said, I've also heard there may be some question or concern regarding her work within the department. I don't know the details, but I would respectfully ask that any concerns be fully and fairly investigated by an unbiased third party, so that decisions are made based on facts and not speculation. From my direct experience, I've seen nothing but dedication, follow-through, and thoughtful solution-oriented approach to her work. I truly hope she will be given the opportunity to interview and be fully heard. I believe she would be a real asset in this role, and I would be happy to speak further about my experience working with her if helpful. Thank you for your time and commitment to the integrity of this process."
Very good. Thank you for those comments. One last call. Are there any additional citizen comments this evening, excuse me, before we proceed with our first presentation? Very good. Then we are going to proceed to a presentation on the Bixby Marionette Removal Plan. Before I defer to the Acting City Manager for some obligatory remarks, I do want to welcome Catherine Downey and John Anderson here, who will be taking a lead on the presentation. John, in particular, has invested a lot of time and energy in this initiative, and we appreciate your leadership. As I had indicated previously, it had been my hope that this information could have been shared at the beginning of the second quarter 2025, but we're towards the tail end, but better late than never. Today is about listening to the proposal by the Bixby Working Group, and this item will be revisited in the coming weeks, likely at one of our July meetings for future consideration. So before I turn it over to Mr. Anderson, Acting City Manager Cole, are there any remarks that you'd like to make at this time?
Thank you very much, Mayor Morrow. Tonight, we are honoring a timeless tradition in Celine, the Bixby Marionettes, and I'm excited to hear more from you about the history that they have had here in Celine. And for those of you that do not know, the Bixby Marionettes live here at City Hall, and they're very carefully taken care of in the City Hall basement. And part of the impetus of this discussion today is to discuss that placement of the Marionettes. So having been developed and rooted in this community, these puppets have brought imagination and storytelling to many generations. So with that, John, I would love to invite you up, and you can learn more about the Bixby puppetry.
And John, feel free to adjust the podium if you'd like. There is a mechanism on the side there that allows you to raise and lower it if it's a little too short for you. See it right there?
Yeah.
Oh, it's as high as it goes, apparently.
I could lower it.
You could lower it. If you're so inclined to lower it, you can certainly do that.
I'm on three hours of sleep, so I have some serious chair energy right now.
Oh my goodness, okay.
Thank you very much for the introduction. Since I've spent about seventeen hours working on this the past couple of days, but only flown this plane once, hopefully we won't have any turbulence during the flight and have a smooth landing. So I thought I'd go with a brief history of 20th-century puppetry and pop culture before going into the Bixby Marionettes, and try to, very briefly. So here's Howdy Doody and Toko Jijia with that Sullivan, which were the puppets that my parents grew up watching. Here's Sherry Lewis and Lamb Shop, along with Jeff Gunnar and his Grumpy Old Man. These were the, these were the puppeteers that I watched growing up, along with the one with the jalapeno on a stick. After World War II, in the state of Iowa, where I'm from, towns of around 30,000 or so created museums. And the museum in Mason City, Iowa, is fortunate enough to have some of the question of Bill Baird, who was the puppeteer who created the puppets that were in the Sound of Music, which you can see the Botra playing with here. He's also responsible for the creation of the first Macy's Day balloons, which he would view as Marionettes in reverse. After he retired, his puppeteers went and worked for Jim Henson. And as a side note, while digitizing the archive, recently I saw there was evidence that Meredith Bixby knew Jim Henson personally. They both serve as puppeteers of America. We also can't talk about the Henson puppets without thinking about what happened a long time ago in a galaxy far, far away. This is a clip from Andor, season two, which was recently released on Disney+. And this is just one second of one episode. If you blink, you miss it. And here we see in the center, a child playing with a marionette of an AT-ST armored vehicle. And it reminded me that that first trilogy of Star Wars relied heavily on puppets for its visual effects. Jabba the Hutt, Yoda, even the speeder bikes on Endor were made with rod puppets and marionettes. RC controls were used, and in later parts of the Star Wars universe, a lot of it was replaced by CGI. But the language and computer graphics stems from puppetry. Meredith Bixby, she was born in 1909. He went to study engineering at what became Wayne's Station University, but while there, he realized he had a love for drawing. And so he left college and went to New York City to study at the Art Students League, where he studied with famed muralist Thomas Hart Benton before he was famous. One of his classmates was Jackson Pollock. To make ends meet, he worked at the New York Public Library, re-shelving books, and there, one day, he saw a book by Paul McFarlane on the repertory of marionette plays. So he decided to hand it, created his own production of Faust, toured it in Covington, Kentucky that summer, 1932, returned to New York City, did performances there, and concluded he might make a better living as a marionetteist and producing puppet plays, but much better living than he could as a painter. So he returned to Michigan, to Detroit, where he spent the next decade making marionette plays and touring them from New York City to New Orleans, before his term of service in World War II. After World War II, around 1948, he moved to Celine, where his father had been the town dentist. His dental office was above what is now Dan's Tavern. And his grandfather, Randy Griswold, which no longer exists, but it's where the, as I understand it, were the fisheries of days on Celine Line Road. He rented space in the Opera House above what is currently Kerrigan Cafe, and every year before a production would tour, he would invite the public in to watch the play, and he and his wife, Thyra, would provide the audience with cider and doughnuts. This is a view of the Opera House. He himself had a repertory of about seven plays that he repeated one every year through seven years, beginning in 1950. It included Aladdin, Jagged the Beanstalk, Pinocchio, The Wizard of Oz, and three plays based on Russian folklore. Between 1950 and 1982, he trained at least sixty marionettes to tour his productions. We assume he trained more, but we lack records from 1932 to 1949. When his marionettes would tour, they would tour for a hundred days a year. They would perform two to three shows per day. They'd entertain roughly 250,000 kids and war bills. And over the course of his career, he entertained more than 10 million people. After 1982, he decided to dedicate his time to filming his marionette plays so that they could live on perpetually. So how did this become a civic collection? Well, 1997, the Bixby Trust was formed, where then-Mayor Cuss signed the document. This is the document. Looks like the city attorney, Alan Grossman, was the one who wrote the certificate. 1998, they opened the display downtown. In the office space, it is just to the east of where New Era Chiropractic is. The space was also operated by the Chamber of Commerce. That was the first incarnation of the Bixby Marionette Project, various tens of thousands of dollars through the EDC, and I gotta be careful how I would say this one, Tifa District. And they had scores of volunteers and hundreds of hours of volunteer labor. Unfortunately, 2008, the display had to close. The collection moved down to the basement. Here's what it looks like today, and just for the record, we cleaned up a little bit of it in April, so it's taking up a little less space. It moved down there because of the Great Recession. And as I understand it, the Pfizer plant had recently closed, which affected the community, and the Ford plant was vacant. And when I spoke with ex-Mayor Driscoll about this last year, she said like her main priority was getting someone into the former Ford plant. So the display, all this, all the collection, the collection moved to the basement. But it was a display in the library, which opened soon after. I kind of find out, just a couple of days ago, this was years in the plant. Initially, Meredith Bixby wanted his collection be in the library. It wasn't feasible at that point. They hadn't yet expanded. So during the expansion process, they created a couple of displays for the Marionettes. And as best as I understand it, this was supposed to be sort of a stopgap to maintain the trust agreement. And it's still a stopgap to this day. So I thought I'd get a little background about how I got involved, because I am from the state of Iowa. Here are some Iowa Hawkeyes. And Iowa was not a place where Bixby toured. Had he, I would have been just a wee bit too young to see him perform. My family didn't move to Celine until 2015. We moved here from Washington, DC, and that was seven years after the display had closed down downtown. So I never saw the puppets before, and I'm not a puppet guy. So how did I become involved? Well, in 2017, I read this wonderful article on the Celine Post about art around Celine and learned there was an art and culture committee. And I thought, well, I gotta be on that. So I applied, and I was accepted. And at the end of the year, Mayor Morrell came to the group and said, you guys are the point people for the collection. As I recall, Catherine, if you back me up on this one, we didn't know. We didn't know that there was a collection that we had to manage. So it was news to everyone that was on the committee. Now, in my past life, I was an associate professor of art in DC. I was a critic, I was a curator. Here's me at one of the shows that I curated at the American University Museum in 2017. A lot of time in people's collections, in archives and such. In fact, this was the reason why I missed when Mayor Morrell came to Arts and Culture to let us know about the puppet collection. So I didn't get to see it personally until February of 2018. And it was the archive that piqued my interest in the collection. Seven, when you're feet roughly, we estimated. And so I became the de facto point person for managing the collection at that time. So I saw the collection 2018, February, and it took us a while to figure out what to do with this thing so big for a volunteer. So we got to thinking about it, put our heads together. Well, 2018, we applied to the University of Michigan School of Information so that we could work with a graduate student. Eventually, that was accepted. So January 2019, we began the process of processing the archives so that they were in better order. We organized this with some volunteers from the Key Club and some members of the Historical Society. We eventually worked with that University of Michigan School of Information student. She created a finding guide for the archive, and she helped us photograph all of the props and subpieces, backdrops. It yielded a great write-up on the University of Michigan School of Information's website, the University of Michigan website. It promoted our collection as well as promoting their graduate program. We received a Shrank Grant from the library for a display. We also hosted a marionette class. And we received a grant from the Michigan Art and Cultural Council. At that time, it was called CACCA. We were able to get a digitization seminar with Brian Wilson, not that Brian, who was the senior archivist at the Henry Ford. And things were moving along at a good clip, and then the pandemic hit. And so we moved the digitization seminar online. We had limited access to the archives at that point because everything closed down. We still managed to get some things digitized, and through that, we were able to create a website of sample archive objects. It was a slow news day with MLive, so they were gracious enough to write an article about it, promoting, once again, the collection we have in Celine. And by that point, I got a little burned up. I loved art and culture at the beginning of 2021. One of the reasons I'll note is grant money. In order to go big with the collection, we needed national endowment for humanities money, which the federal government at that time, and I would already probably still, isn't going to trust, entrust tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars to volunteers with good intentions. There needs to be a person employed. And I had mentioned it at the time that it would be good if someone in the city was at least entitled only in charge of reflection. They can still manage it, but they would make certain that all of the money got spent properly. And that the activities of the grant would be achieved. But we were dealing with a pandemic then. So I understand if that fell on deaf ears or was forgotten, or maybe I didn't articulate it well enough. In any case, I decided to move on to other projects, like writing about art in the White House and the collection post. So I left the collection in Catherine Downey's evil hands. And she pursued it with vigor, the plan that we had put forth earlier, in years earlier. So she continued working with the University of Michigan School of Information. They photographed all the puppets. They created a great guide, a catalog for the puppets. She worked with Cultureverse. They created an online gallery of what we had digitized at that point, or what had been digitized. And they did 3D scans of puppets, not all of the collections, some of them. So they also did a 3D scan of the Opera House. If you haven't seen it, it's pretty remarkable. Again, MLive was kind enough to write it. Around the same time, Jim and Marcia Cameron were writing oral history of the collection. And I know in 2022, Jim brought a typewriter to City Hall, I think expecting you guys would make a book out of it, which, that's not your job. That's not the city's job. So in 2023, I volunteered. I said I had to do it for a project, but then I would take care of it. And I was going slow because I was dealing with long COVID at the time, technically still, I don't know. So it took me a year to do it. And their intention was to make this book so that it could help raise money for the activities of the collection. And how to publish it, Jim came to the city and thought, what's the worst that can happen? Give me a little money for breaking the book? Expecting the worst-case scenario, might be being told no, he'd go somewhere else with his hat and his hand, and maybe write some grants. And that's not what happened. Instead, an employee in the city called Catherine to her office and said, get the puppets out of the basement. So that's where the Bixby Marionette Project got its renewal. And so that was in the spring of 2023, where the ideas are circulating. By the end of 2023, Jim and Marcia were going to, were heading the Bixby Marionette Project with the good gracious Bixbys. And they were going to be the lead of the Bixby Marionette Project. They were the chairs, and then Marcia died. I wasn't involved with the project at the time. I was helping other than as a volunteer capacity with writing grant writing, but Mike basically asked me to step up and be the chair. So that's why I'm here today. December 2024, we were awarded a $12,000 grant through Cook Marks Fund out of California, which is for the preservation, promotion, and display of marionettes, puppetry, and puppets, also for puppet productions. We're not at that stage. WPMU hosted us on Creative Impact to help promote the book. After library renovations were completed, Eric Grossman and I installed a new display of marionettes in one of the library displays. Here we have The Wizard of Oz. Oh, tiny, Wicked was out. I was furloughed this fall and into the winter, so I had some free time to digitize the archives. Currently, 8,500 images await post-processing and the addition of metadata. I've written a manual for how to do that, and so we look forward to working, hopefully, with the Key Club volunteers, volunteers of National Honor Society, and what the public might be interested in. It's something that we can do remotely. April of this year, we had an archive day. We had taken some of that grant money, purchased cradles. Now all the marionettes sit in cushioned cradles. All the archives are now in acid-free folders, and we have acid-free boxes waiting to transfer those folders into for a leader date. Bixby's online, it's got a Facebook page, it's got a Nextdoor account, it's got a Wikipedia site. We're endeavoring to make a new website for the collection. We've also started working with Anna Hurst Kreitz. She has consulted with us. And there's some synergy there. We were intending to attend the county fest, but she encourages us to get out there in the public and go to other festivals as well. So we're exploring Fun Fest. We're exploring being in Oktoberfest as well. We thought about contacting the schools. She's, get the schools! So, okay, we're getting the schools. We're with, we talked with K-3 teachers recently, and so there's opportunities there. I'm talking with Elkhole at one point earlier in the year, getting a display into EHM. EHM is on board with that, so hopefully, we'll have a display at evangelical homes later on this year. We've also been in talks with Tyler Kinley at Practice. In fact, I met with him earlier today, and he's willing to give us sort of a month opportunity, very low rent. And so that's something else that we're looking forward to exploring in the very near future. Now, the value of the Bixby Marionette Collection. This is not one of monetary value. This is value for the community. As I mentioned, when we moved here in 2015, when we moved here, I no longer was a professor. We moved here because my wife's work and also to be closer to family. So I became a stay-at-home dad with two children under the age of seven. And I gotta say, the little museums dot southern Michigan were a godsend, very modern. At the Magic Museum in Marshville. So whether it was the Magic Museum, Rushmore Farm, Fire Museum, and Miss Landy, there are all these little places we would go to. We'd go to them, we might go downtown, grab a bite to eat, you know, keep the kids from crying on the way home. Might buy a bottle to keep them entertained. And if there's something in that community that was really attractive to us, my wife and I might go back for a night out dinner. We might go to the park on another occasion. There's always these opportunities to go back. And the Bixby Marionette Project wants that for this game. An opportunity for families to come here so that after they're done with us, go downtown, get something from Eleanor Sweets and Soda, go to Benny's Bakery, grab a burger at Dan's, F. Franklin Pond. There's something more to come back to. This is a rich community in terms of its opportunities. And besides, this collection is crazy unique. I've spoken with several of the puppetry museums and collections in the country, and as best as I can tell, they just have the puppets. They don't have the backdrops. They don't have the props. They sure as hell don't have the traveling stage that went around. It's what makes this collection really unique. And then the archive. I mean, there are hundreds of photos. There's hundreds of children's drawings. There's dozens of posters, flyers. I mean, we've got one here that dates back to 1937. There are numerous scripts, and records, calendars that mixed the collection singular in the United States, especially for a town of less than 10,000. And since Meredith lived here for about 55 years, his family went back to the 19th century. Like, it's really special. So I was asked to make a plan. And part of the reason to make the plan was to put the kids on getting kicked out of the basement. So thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for doing that. But I think we have to reflect on it, from it. Because in 2017, where the Arts and Culture Committee was basically voluntold, we've got a collection manager. And we didn't have any goal. We didn't have any direction. We didn't have a timeline. We didn't have a budget. We're all volunteers. So it was a lot to deal with. I wrote the seven-year plan. It was told maybe the seven-year plan was just a little too long, so I reduced it down to five. Well, maybe that's still long, too. But I think it's important to reflect on that. In the last five years, we have worked solely with volunteers. We've worked just with grant money, with whatever money we've had elsewhere. It's come from the Arts and Culture Committee at the end of a fiscal year. Maybe we would spend down. So we're here to figure things out. We have a pandemic to deal with. And since being told to get the collection out of the basement, we've also been told that the city values arts and history, and Bixby's a part of it. We're told to move on. We've been told that maybe we can work together to create some kind of a space. And so we're sort of all over the place in terms of what this plan should look like. So I know you all have a copy of the plan, or at least I think you do. But that's an ongoing conversation. And the reason why it's an ongoing conversation is because we don't know what you want. It's not entirely clear to us. It's not explicitly stated. And we need to hear that. We need to hear the explicit statement of what you want for the future of this collection. And you have this listed as a removal plan, and we don't know exactly what that means. We don't know if that's a removal during renovation. We don't know if it's a removal permanently. Are we still friends? The Bixby Marionette Project wants to go big. They want a place to display the collection, to store the collection. And some of the committee, some of the group, think a place downtown would be great. That's good. I like it. But I also think maybe we could re-acquire Meredith Bixby's home, which is what this one is of. He built this in 1950, 1952. It's just over there. A lot of trits here. It'd be interesting to take this place, put an addition on it. Maybe have some additional places for the Celine Storage Society to have rotating displays, for artists in the area to have rotating displays. There are certainly adjacent things that we could come up with as the Bixby Marionette Project. For example, the photographs of Cecil E. Lockhart, who was the photo editor for the Ann Arbor News. Beautiful photographs. With an addition, we might be able to create a mixed-use space, like a classroom or a theater. Also been floated, if we were to work together to create a space, you know, a public space. Now, there may have been some missed opportunities. I don't know what the timeline is for anything. I don't know how it all works. I don't know what the timeline is for anything, I don't know how it all works, but capital improvement projects. Perhaps at the library, at the schools, but those have come and gone. You have renovation coming up here, I hear. That might also be another missed opportunity, though. There could have been a space for Bixby or improved storage, something in that part. Perhaps it's an opportunity to recreate or reactivate in another part of the city. Meredith Bixby did some stuff at the Depot Museums, filling the Depot Museums, so maybe there's an opportunity there. Maybe there's a park in town that needs something. I don't know. We can help with that. We can help write grants. But what we can't do is we can't create our own capital improvement projects because we're volunteers. Now, I propose a five-year plan, which would suggest three years to raise money for a space and two years to make the space happen. And these are just broad brush stroke kind of years. We assume maybe we could raise 90% of the revenue within the first, within those three years, hopefully, to make the space happen. But what would we need from the city? Well, we would need that city staff person to be a collection manager so that if the federal grants that Trump and Doge destroyed with NEA, NEH, and IMLS, if they were to ever come back, maybe we would have an opportunity for those. But like I said, volunteers can't get those grants. Someone has to be employed. If we were to get a space, we might require rezoning. After all, if we were to put it in the house over there, that probably can no longer just be a residence, a residence, it has to be something else. And, you know, renaming Davenport Street Bixby Way, that'd be cool. You know, that's something that you guys can do, I think. I don't know. I have no idea, actually. But paramount to all this is keeping the collection basement for those reasons. Now, if after three years we don't get enough money, one of the priorities of the Bixby Marionette Project is the preservation of the collection, and that does not have to be here. We can, we can split it up to the four corners of the United States, that's fine. We can do that. There are a number of places in Michigan that might take it, parts of it, only parts. DIA has said they want the whole thing, but they can't take it because it's too big, it's too expensive to pull in, it's too much to care for, which is why I kind of understanding some of the qualms that the city is having with the collection. It's big. But we could have a smaller presence here if we were to break it up. But again, it's a question, is that what you want? So these are our ideas. And we also have the digital archive, once that gets completed. The bottom line, after several conversations recently with members of the Bixby Marionette Project, the number one thing that I was told to share with you is that it's your collection. This is yours. We are helpers. We're volunteers. And I am not the board. You guys pull my strings as the, as the chair of the board, they pull my strings as the chair of the board, I try to work as a go-between. But I cannot unilaterally make any declarations as the chair. It has to be a discussion, it has to be an agreement. So if it comes to moving the collection out, it's your collection. If it comes to storing the collection, it's your collection. We can help. We're happy to help. We're happy to raise as many people as we can to help out. But considering half of the board is 80 or older, two of them live in Idaho, one's disabled, you know, you're like, it's a little difficult for us to do it. So it's an ongoing discussion, and it begins with what you want. So I hope it'll be explicit with me, and so then we can figure this out. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions.
Thank you, John. You gave us a lot of background, threw a lot of information at us, but that's good. That's what we wanted. A lot to digest, and I recognize that for some of my colleagues, this is really the first opportunity that they've had an in-depth discussion with, pertaining, excuse me, to the, the history of the Bixby Marionettes and their future. Let me first defer to the acting city manager. Anything you'd like to add at this time before I open it up for comments or questions from my council colleagues? And again, we're not going to attempt to develop any consensus on this issue tonight, it would be far too premature, but we will likely revisit it on, on July 7th or at our subsequent meeting in July.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's very thorough.
Mr. Councilman Lush, can I start with you? Because Mr. Anderson is indeed correct, the Arts and Culture Committee does have a fiduciary responsibility to maintain and promote the Bixby collection. That transpired when the old Bixby Trust Committee was dissolved and, and folded into the Arts and Culture Committee more than a decade ago. You're our liaison to the Arts and Culture Committee. Is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
Jeff said both John and Catherine have done a great job, you know, for what little resources they've had to do it. And, you know, we've, I, I think you two have been the most diligent workers that we've had here. You know, I've lived in Slane a long time, only been in council for a couple of years now, but, you know, I'm glad you are bringing this forward finally, even though it was kind of a boot kick from the council to do it. But, you know, we, we appreciate that we really need to make the decision.
Mr. CEO, any initial thoughts or comments for Mr. Anderson? I would also note that Helen Clark has joined us, who's a representative on our Arts and Culture Committee, and has been on our Arts and Culture Committee for many, many years, and has also performed some, some great service to our community, similar to that of, of Mr. Anderson and Catherine Downey, who was formerly a member of the Arts and Culture Committee. Mr. CEO, any initial comments or thoughts this evening?
I have more questions than any thoughts. Who owns the Bixby House right now, do you know?
The person who bought it from the Bixbys.
So it's in private ownership?
It is, and it's, it's, it's being rented currently. As best as I understand, it had a four-rented sign, so, yeah. It's a, it's a pipe dream. We have a lot of pipe dreams on the, on the Bixby Marionette Project. But, yeah, it's, it's under private ownership.
My belief is that the underlying desire has always been to keep it as a whole collection. But then, when we say we want to keep it as a whole collection, everybody says, where do we put this collection? What do we do with it? How do we properly display it? I mean, we can keep it in the basement, out in front of it, and all it's gonna do is collect dust.
Well, so, after talking with the Museum of the Basin City, they have 300 Marionettes from the Bill Berry Collection, only have displayed 1200. We have 100, and only 90 of them are really suitable for display unless we want to talk about, you know, ancient history and broken puppets. But, you know, ideally, what we would do is probably display seven at a time, rotate it every six months, give it a take. And the, the display in the library is due for a refresh within the next two to three months. And so with that, with the archives, there are additional displays that can be made, Cecil E. Lockhart photographs, I think the introduction that I had in terms of like relating it to 20th century Marionettes could work, since Meredith Bixby made films. He also has storyboards to go along with it, so there's ways of doing storyboarding, displaying the storyboarding. There are, with all the children's art, there's an opportunity to invite, you know, community members, community artists, elementary school artists, things of that nature. So there are lots of, I think, opportunities to explore with the curatorial process and the display practices that could go along with a larger permanent display space. But that's also why I was thinking, like, if we were to dream big, it's, it would be important to have also some element of the Slane Storage Society's support, or to invite people from the community, or to create artistic displays for special things, so that way people can keep coming back. I think one of the main failures of the, of the space that was downtown is that there was no opportunity of refreshing. Granted, I wasn't here to see it, but as best as I understood, they never changed the displays. It was all there. One and done. Once you've seen it, you're good. And, you know, we want to keep people coming back. So it would require a curatorial plan, which there's several of us who are certainly capable of doing that.
All right. To my recollection, I've only ever seen one Marionette production as an adult, and that was in Germany. And it seemed somewhat arcane at that time. And of course, it was performed in German, so I didn't totally understand it. So some of these things, I think, are, are difficult. I don't know, are there any current Marionettes in the United States that practice there?
Oh, here, please do.
Catherine Downey. Last year, when I was on Arts and Culture Committee still, I attended the International Puppet Theater Festival in Chicago at my own expense, but I wanted to go and do some research to this question because it had been asked of me before. And I can tell you that puppeteering and Marionette theater and art is expanding, it is growing. There are people who tour from all over the world, and they come to Chicago for this particular thing. But they, if you go to the DIA in Detroit, they have a lot of those shows that come there, a lot of Broadway, and actually, Terry Markin is here from the Celtic Festival, her daughter in particular works with this kind of thing on Broadway. Puppeteering is a big part of that. A lot of TV shows use puppeteering now. So what I learned at this festival and in the months since, or the years since, looking at doing more research, is, is making a comeback, basically. It kind of petered out, but it is really back in a major way, and it's not just Marionettes, there's different forms of puppeteering, and there's a big resurgence and a lot of interest in it again, so, yeah.
Any opportunities there to resurrect this collection?
In Chicago, or?
No, it's a Bixby, the Bixby current collection.
Right, right.
Oh, yes, yes. We, we've talked about that, we've been actually working with Terry a little bit, too. And that is like one of our goals, is we would like to, we would like for Eric Grossman and other puppeteers of, who worked with Meredith Bixby, who are still in the area. One of our goals is in the next few years to have them train other people like us on how Meredith trained them, so that that can be passed down, and then have some shows at, like the Celtic Festival, other places, and then ultimately in the museum, have regular shows, so that students can attend. Meredith Bixby's son, his, his son's wife, she wrote up a bunch of curriculum that we are hoping to include in the museum that would, so that people who, the children who attended could then have, you know, different school lessons based on that. And that would be one of the goals, too, would be to have the shows again, and use Meredith's scripts. And not necessarily travel with it, because it would hold up, but do some shows for nostalgia's sake and to kind of bring that back around.
I don't have any positive direction for you, because I don't really...
It's a lot of small steps right now. We can't take midweek, so the Majing and Meredith show, yeah, next year. But the idea of getting one into the schools, K through three, where they're inclined to be receptive to it currently, other art teachers, a little less so right now. So that creates an opportunity through community ed to create classes, I think, create classes to, about how to manufacture Marionettes or puppets in terms of writing scripts, in terms of creating plays. You know, and they don't just have to be Wizard of Oz. There's Redwood Puppet Theater in Vermont, near Stowe, which they have, like, I learned about coal miners. They did a play on coal miners and unions. Because it's Vermont, they jinx things like that. So, you know, there's, there's all kinds of venues or, or ways that you can start engaging in theater. If, I don't know, has anyone seen the movie Free Lady Sarah Marshall? Okay, so, you know, at the end of Free Lady Sarah Marshall, the lead character, like, Jason Segel, has a puppet play that's basically, it's a, was it opera about?
Dragon Ball?
Yeah, all right. That's Jason Segel's play. He was told not to ever show that to anyone by the movies, or by, oh gosh, you forget the guy, Neo the guy. But, you know, you can use old Jack like this, on any subject. Doesn't just have to be the seventh place.
To me, the value would be in its use, in its employment, not in its storage in the That's, that's about all I can offer.
Thank you. We appreciate that, Mr. CEO. Mayor Portem Dillon, any initial comments or questions or observations for Mr. Anderson or members of the Arts and Culture Committee?
Thank you. Thank you very much for this very informative presentation. It really did kind of close a lot of gaps of information that some of us didn't really So my questions are gonna sort of be around funding. So has anything been done since 2008, since the collection moved back here? Has, has there been any funding, like grants, other than the recent grant that you had gotten? Is there any means for supporting the, the collection?
Oh, yeah. So, let's see, between 2008 and 2017, I can't speak to any of that because the live era was part of Arts and Culture. And I don't think the, I don't think anyone was actively tending to the Marionettes apart from Eric Grossman and stuff like this. So funding opportunities that are available, there are several grants through Michigan Arts and Culture Council, I guess it's current acronym. There are several grants available through the Historical, Michigan Historical Society. I actually have a list of possible grant opportunities in my phone. There are a couple of different Ford Foundations, a couple of different Dow Foundations. And so a lot of the limitations for those was in having a 501(c)(3), which we have not done. Our Michigan nonprofit, we do have an EIN that was initially in this presentation, but did not make it to the note cards. Now, a 501(c)(3) can host us under their umbrella, which the Celtic Festival currently is doing, the Cook and Marx Fund. Monies which were received in October of last year was because we are under Celtic Fest's umbrella for 501(c)(3). We are currently in the process of going through the application. We haven't submitted it yet. So the Historical, Michigan Historical, Michigan Oral History Association, like all those have funds available, which can help us with Marionettes. And outside of that, as I mentioned, the NEH, the Institute for Museum Library Studies or Services, IMLS, that's, that's another opportunity. But like I said, someone has to be employed.
Thank you. So I think that Mr. CEO said it best, in my view, is that I feel like the value is in their use. So just sort of clarify, are you looking for a museum to display them? Are you looking to have active shows? And were you also, did I understand that you said the collection is too fragile to sort of roadshow it?
There are some limitations there, I think, with touring them. Personally, I think there's also some limitations in performing with them. I mean, the Marionettes are 16 to 80 years old. Having said that, the hinges are not made of leather. That's usually the big key concern when it comes to working with old Marionettes. Their, the hinges are, the joints are all made with post, they usually, I think they have a piece of metal in the, in the joints. So then that means the really only delicate part is the string. The costume also might be a little delicate as well, given that prior to going downtown, they were hanging in a garage for 20 years, 15 years? So they weren't in a climate-controlled facility there, and then downstairs, they were in trunks. They were in their travel bags, in tour trunks, which is what the, which is what the puppeteers would travel, use to travel the collection, well, specifically shows. So that leads to off-gassing issues. So there's a whole bunch of like museum conservation things that go on, because there are all kinds of materials that the Marionettes are made of. So, like I said, this is an ongoing conversation, and, like, it's possible that we could probably do some performances with it, but we'd want to keep them minimal. And I think going forward, it would be the opportunity to bring Marionette shows in, and then as we're teaching kids how to, and/or adults how to make Marionettes, you know, using those Marionettes to make shows. So it's sort of an all-the-above yes-and.
Thank you. My last question, because I want to yield time for my council members, is when you talk about needing three years to raise funds, what is the, the basic dollar amount that you think that you need? And is that a starting point?
This, again, is, is sort of a question mark, because is it the Bixby Marionette Project on its own, or are we working together? So if it's the Bixby Marionette Project on its own, we figure a million dollars. I mean, ideally, if $15 million fell from the sky today, then we could fund this in perpetuity, because we'd have a building for a million, million and a half, and then we'd make an endowment for, you know, two people to, to be curators and administrators of the space, operations and overhead. Short of that, so we probably need to raise about a million dollars to purchase the space, we have it, make it, you know, worthwhile. If we're creating a space together, then that's probably a $2, $2.5 million cover, because it would not just be a Bixby space, it would be a city space used for other, for other purposes, of which Bixby's a part of it.
Thank you very much.
John, my, again, appreciate you being here this evening, and of equal importance, thank you for, for preparing such a thoughtful, thorough presentation PowerPoint. My visceral reaction is, of course, that in an ideal world, it would be great if the collection in its totality, entirety was, was, was maintained. Correct me if I'm wrong, though, that we don't currently possess the entire collection, because at the time of the trust execution, certain elements of the collection were given to his children and grandchildren. Is that correct?
That would be correct. There's a lot, I don't know, half a dozen out there that are not part of this trust group.
Okay. Which leads me to, I guess, my main question of the evening, and of course, we'll follow up in the ensuing weeks. When you mentioned the DIA is willing to take a portion, did they indicate to you or any of your colleagues which portion specifically they were, they were interested in?
No, they did not. And I'll, this is a conversation with Larry Beranski from 2019. He did express that they, they would love to have the collection, they just can't take it, it's too big. There's a lot of, oh gosh, again, this is a bunch of collection management stuff, being able to go through and, and assess the condition, condition requirements, being able to find the appropriate furniture that holds the collection, the shelving. They have very specialized shelving that's climate-controlled, circulated in their concept. There's all the, you know, numbering of things, putting it in a database and all that. So part of my idea back in 2019 was, well, if the Arts and Culture Committee can do some of that work, then it makes it more appealing for any collection to want to absorb some of it. And knowing that DIA, sure, they'd love the whole thing because it's complete, can't take it. So what can we do to facilitate them to take a portion of it? And since Larry Beranski does, so.
Okay.
But, you know, I think it's, it's a, it's a question.
Yeah, I'm personally interested in following up on that, because of course, that would be an entity who has the skill, the acumen, the resources, not only to appropriately preserve what they obtain, but also to display and promote, and the foot traffic through the DIA on an annual basis has got to be in the hundreds of thousands, so.
It's a margin of the issue.
Yeah. So, good. The only other thing I would add, and I have articulated this, too, in the past, if you're looking for specific sort of goals and objectives, you know, long-term, I, I don't think maintaining the presence in our basement is, is appropriate. Yeah, I, I think that the, the, because we're talking about not only Marionettes, but backdrops, props, and then two-dimensional items. So the collection is very large. It would be, it would be appropriate to store it elsewhere with, in a place with, with, with staff members who have the skill and acumen to care for something of, of this age. So, you know, my, my goal is to, I think, twofold. One, get at least a portion of it displayed, accessible to the broader public, and two, preserved in a manner in which items are not going to deteriorate in the ensuing years or decades. So that, that's my observation and, or thoughts for the evening, and of course, we can have a, we can have subsequent discussions in the coming weeks. Councilman McGirba, thoughts, questions, or concerns for Mr. Anderson or members of the Arts and Culture Committee?
Again, thank you for the summary. And part of my hope was, when you did the book and some of these inventories and everything, was to create that type of situation so that we could provide for whatever potential use or where it could end up at some point. I was hoping that, like, where you mentioned the DIA and such, that we could rotate with them, you know, borrow the things to bring that back, so that we could have that type of nature. Because similar to what we're facing, even with the Historical Society, is that issue of all of our collections and everything are not in the ideal space. I mean, the majority of our archives are in the basement of Renshler Farm, which is extremely damp, and, you know, just recently, we put air conditioning in to help kind of address some of that. But when you have that type of situation, and it's a very large collection, even at the Depot is a similar type of situation. So I know where you're at, where we're at, and in addition to the number of staff and people that are involved anymore. So... So when we look at this from the perspective of the entire city, we're having to look at even the historical assets related to the museums. And adding another museum, although we could probably unify the stuff that we can do together and kind of work on this, that's where in my future concern is, are we doing the best for the collections, or will they be lost as a result of not taking action and getting them to the best, you know, best location available? And whatever you're doing now to help facilitate that, I think is great. If we could get somebody to donate us a million dollars, would be great. I've been looking for that donation for the farm and for the depot, just like the rest of us have. I mean, effectively, we've been able to get some money from, you know, inheritance, those type of things that we've used to leverage, that type of thing. For the puppets, for me, it's really where is best to put those so that they survive?
Yeah.
And if we need to keep them in our basement for a while, until we can convert to that, I think that's great. It's giving you a time period in which the realization is, with that timeframe, deterioration continues until we can figure out what we can do. And how to best work in an arrangement, because even the family, I know, we've had these since 97. I was on council when they first came out and saw that iteration of where they've gone and where they have it. I like the idea of the library right now, because at least they're out there. But the idea of the actual presentation, because I was young when I actually saw those puppets being used. So I remember those performances. And knowing Eric is one of the last ones that actually knows how to actually manage those, and in his time with the Historical Society, brings about this idea that we're getting much, much older, and us that remember it are losing that. But if we lose the collection itself, it's lost forever. So whatever you can bring about to make this the best opportunities for where we can get this thing to exist is my goal. And so I appreciate you bringing forward the ideas and things that we're looking at, so that they can additionally be considered.
Yeah.
But for me, it's preserving this collection as where it best can be placed.
I personally share that. And I mean, this is just me speaking for me. I don't care. I personally don't. I don't. And, I mean, to your point, in terms of a better place to store them, you know, I think we've taken some steps to make that happen.
Yeah.
You know, there's, I know we bought a dehumidifier in 2019, as we were spending down art and culture money. I don't know when it got hooked up, but, you know, now it's circulated into gray water of the city, if, as best as I understand. No longer are there tulip bowls being stored downstairs. That was to clean the mold off of a couple of Marionette objects, because of how they were stored. They're no longer stuck in trunks, so they're all, you know, spread out on shelves. Like, there's, there've been like little improvements here and there along the way. You know, is it going to slow the aging? No. But I don't think anything really is, unless we chromatically see it's not. Yeah. It's always going to be ongoing that. That's true. So I don't think there's a perfect end. I don't think we should let the perfect be the end of the year.
Great.
Great, they're good, and they're good enough now.
And I do, if we continue to storm down the basement, we may need to do a few minor things, because I've been down there and actually been the one that calls in when that humidifier's not working. So I understand that concern, and we did have a flood, because even some of the stuff that's stored down there got affected a year or so ago. So the concern for it is the liability for you guys, is that, you know, we could have a, you know, fire sprinkler go, and the whole thing is destroyed. So that's where I'm really concerned in making sure it's in the right kind of environment and everything. But at this point, if you need some time, I think we should be able to help with that at some point.
I mean, they've been good downstairs for the last 15 years?
Yeah, I know. And it's like, we haven't had a huge rush on repurposing that space at this point. But for us, it's always been the liability and the concern in that we owe a duty to the family to honor the agreement, and we haven't been very good at doing that as a city.
Yeah, but they appreciate that these conversations.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Geerba. Councilmember Rice, any questions or comments for Mr. Anderson or members of the Arts and Culture Committee?
Nothing for me, other than to say this was super informative. I hadn't heard any of these stories, so thank you very much for those.
Councilmember Harma?
Yeah, hi. I grew up with the Punch and Judy and Gross Point, and I'm really familiar with the whole nostalgia with this. I did have a couple of questions about the budget, and this has been new and interesting for me to hear about and learn about the history of this. How is this budgeted, or what is this funded by? Is this funded all in, the management and everything of this collection is funded by the trust? Or is that, is there some of the city funds that are going from the general fund to the preservation or the maintenance and storage of this collection?
So over the course of my time overseeing things and dealing with things, a lot of it's just been sweating. But in terms of things that we purchase, if it wasn't through grants, through like the Shrank Ranch or the FCD, we changed that and A C C grant, which is for, which is not directly benefiting elements of the collection. It's been through art and culture budgets. So at the end of, when I was in, when I was teaching, what would happen at the end of the year is we'd spend down. So if the furniture budget wasn't spent above, we would try to spend down. So that sort of ethos was placed in 2018, when we were looking at our budget, what have we not spent? You know, like, on Celine, or on, you know, the library. And we figured, okay, we have an excellent amount left, so let's spend that on the Marionettes. And I don't know if that ethos was necessarily carried on into 2020 or '21, after I left Arts and Culture. But I do know shelves are purchased, and so I'm assuming that was kind of the methodology that was, that was underway. Got money as we can on the Marionettes. Otherwise, it's the Cook Marks Fund, which has enabled us to purchase, you know, all the items for the archive day, where we purchase boxes and foam.
So for the arts and culture budget, how much roughly was that annual budget expenditure?
That used to be $3,000. I think it's a sixth of that now? I'm not certain.
Five.
500?
5,000. I'm sorry.
15?
Arts and culture budget now?
70, 15.
How do you have 15 to 3,000 a year? Okay.
The year that we purchased the shelves and muslin that we used, 2022, I think, we were given some extra money that year to use specifically for that purpose, and it was a one-time deal. And so after that, I think that was the last stuff that we purchased for Bixby, as far as I recall.
Yeah, that's one, right. And like, the trust agreement, like, there's no money in the trust agreement.
Okay. Just before my time runs out, I just, I voice council person Geerba's concern as well, is that just because it hasn't happened doesn't mean it couldn't happen. And I'm a little bit concerned about the insurance, the climate, you know, control type of things that would be need to preserve that. And are we doing the best thing for this collection by, you know, it's an all-or-nothing, keeping it together versus piecing it out sooner than later might be in the best interest of the entire, you know, overall preservation of the collection. So I do know that, have you looked into any museums that are specific to Punch and Judy type of displays?
Like, I've spoken with the Puppetry Museum in Atlanta about how they go on accessioning of, or puppets. Sorry. Blown over my realities of. And I've spoken with the Mason City Museum. They're in, no, because they just people there. But, you know, there's a process quarterly, every, or maybe once every, twice a year, perhaps, depends on the institution. If someone comes forward with a bit of collection, that's what they start, you know, taking a look at. And there has to be a presentation in terms of, like, here are the Marionettes we have, here's the, here's a sort of bit of collection we want to present to you. Will you take, you know, the things other than Marionettes, like the various properties? Would they be interested in archives? There are all those elements. In terms of just dispersing the archives, there's a potential for the Eastern Michigan University Library to have an interest in it. I know one of Meredith Bixby's former Marionettes, Brian Stein, has a collection there, who teaches puppetry arts and children at the university. It's not on our board, but who's helping us in the process of pursuing the academic interests of trying to teach puppetry and creative products. It just depends on the institution.
Maybe that might be an option to look into a little bit more, for the benefit of everybody seeing them, I think maybe that direction might be.
Yeah. It's a casual conversation, like, whenever I'm on the phone with someone, it's like, how to support food, yes? But in terms of offering them, that's currently at my job.
Thank you, Councilmember Harma. Mr. Anderson, we want to be respectful of your time, since it's already quarter after eight, but we do have one last question from, or comment from Councilmember Seale.
Have you ever approached, or has anybody, Mr. Cameron, I don't know if you know or not, has anybody ever approached the Michigan Historical Museum and Archives?
Well, we, no, we haven't formally approached anyone about absorbing any part of the collection in a form. But in terms of a conversation about it, it might be, yeah, I don't know, generally.
Do you have a contact there, Mr. Seale?
No, we were just there last week. That's the only reason it came to my mind.
Okay.
I do want to emphasize that we prefer to, like, the Bixby Marionette Project would prefer to keep it as possible as a big collection.
Sure.
I'm duty-bound to say that.
Sure.
And.
Not in the basement.
Yeah.
Display.
As much as usual, but.
As usual. But, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to have had this audience. Thank you for listening to my very long discussion, and for all your questions. And I also want to extend a special thank you to Ms. Cole. For the record, you were the first individual on staff who expressed an interest in the Marionettes, in trying to find a solution. And that did not go unnoticed. So I appreciate, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your time this evening. Excellent presentation. We'll be following up with you and talking again in the ensuing weeks and months. Thanks to Catherine and also to Helen for attending as well. Appreciate that. We are going to transition to the consent portion of today's agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Councilmember Dylan, I believe you have an amended motion, is that correct?
Yes, please. Move to approve citing that we will be removing 25-102 and 25-103 to postpone to a date certain of July 7th.
And if I'm correct, you spoke to the acting city manager about these issues earlier today, and that would be referred to legal, is that, am I?
Correct.
Okay, very good. So it's been a motion by Mayor Protem Dillon to approve the consent agenda, striking agenda items 25-102 and 25-103 to a date certain, which would be July the 7th. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Geerba. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, agenda item 25-109, Waste Management Five-Year Refuge and Recycling Contract Extension Proposal. This will be a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the memorandum from DPW Director Hopola, and to approve or not to approve the negotiated five-year contract proposal from Waste Management for Refuge and Recycling Services. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Geerba simply to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, let's see, he'll be the second on that one. I'll get you on the next one, Mayor Protem Dillon. Director Hopola, I'm going to take five minutes to give a little bit of background on this and to explain the recommendation that is subsequently going to be before council this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I first want to thank Chantel La Forest, our representative from Waste Management, being here with us tonight. Hopefully, if I can't answer all of your questions adequately, she might be able to have to have some context to add to that. But yeah, so between myself and acting city manager Al Cole, we've been negotiating with Chantel and Waste Management over the past few months. Currently, our contract goes until the end of September, September 30th of 2025. And so we've been in negotiations over a five-year extension, that being a 5% increase every single year for, that is refuse, recycling, and then obviously, we have yard waste included in that. I would like to add that all of our neighboring communities are also looking at extending five-year proposals or going out to bid for five years. I know many of you were aware of the WORMA's, the WORMA Group's intentions to go out as a county for bid, and that fell through this past winter. With a lot of turnover in our neighboring communities with elections and things of that nature, our three largest communities were then out of that. So we had the city of Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti Township, and Pittsfield Township all back out of that. And it kind of threw things into disarray. But gladly, we have the services of Waste Management, who have been here for 30-some years, that have done a great job for this community, provide a high level of service to us. We've been always confident to continue that relationship with them, and we're pretty confident with the rates that they've provided us. And so as I look at that, again, we're proposing that we actually go for a five-year extension with them, that current rate being $19.95 per month. We currently have just over 3,100 units in the city. That grows a little bit per month, but nothing too crazy there. And then we also have our commercial services, where we're charged trash per yard and recycling per yard. We also have, Waste Management's also provided cost breakdowns for us for additional carts, cart exchange, and additional bulk items that would be billed to the residents directly. Chantel, hand it over to you, if I've missed anything or anything you'd like to add.
No, I'm a little bit taller than the previous gentleman, so I'll be a test. No, Chantel La Forest, senior county executive for Waste Management, very happy to be here tonight, very thankful to be looking at another five years of the city of Celine. As Director Hopola alluded, we've been working on this for quite a few months. And I think that we've proved that something favorable. One of the other things that we're doing as part of this agreement is getting rid of the recycled processing charges, which has always been a variable cost. That was something that WM introduced back when the recycling market was a lot more volatile. Obviously, there were quite a few different changes that have happened over the last five to 10 years, directly impacting the recycling market and just the overall commodity values. We really haven't seen the return that we thought we were going to. Originally, those recycling processing charges were built into WM contracts as a pass-through, really kind of a protective measure for both us and our customers. We just aren't really seeing the need for it, and we don't foresee a long-term need for it anymore. So what WM has done is we've said, hey, we're going to take on the risk of that potential volatility and provide our customers, who do have recycled processing charges that vary and can be a little bit unpredictable, a flat processing rate. So what we did is we essentially looked at 12 months of payments and got down to a per-unit rate. So that's going to help with the invoicing process. There's no longer going to be a manual invoicing function, so the city will receive their invoices faster. They can receive all invoices via our portal now, and expedite all payments via the portal as well. So hopefully, a win for the city, and on behalf of my billing partners, a win for them as well.
Chantel, thank you for your time this evening. And Director Hopola, thank you for your analysis and work on this. Before I open up for questions from my colleagues, I do have one question I think would be best addressed by you. And I'll preface by saying this is a relatively minor thing, but I know after tonight, I'm going to get inquiries particularly from some of our, some of my senior constituents. Years ago, Waste Management used to offer smaller carts for both recycling and for trash pickup. And the smaller carts were preferred by many of our senior residents, singles, particularly those who may have a one-car garage, and HOA or condo restrictions about placing recycling containers or trash containers on the exterior of their property. Are those still available? Is there any attempt to make them available to customers within the Celine community?
When you say smaller, how small do you mean?
Well, I don't know the exact gallon size, but they were probably about half of the size of the standard recycling and trash containers that are delivered or provided to residents now.
Absolutely. So the city of Celine utilizes 96-gallon carts for both waste and recycle. We have it built into the contract that anyone who would like a smaller cart, which is a 64-gallon cart, has the opportunity to pay $25 exchange fee, and they can utilize that smaller cart. There was also a time where we were providing 32-gallon carts. However, as we continue to transition to automated service, they're just a little too small, and they have a habit of going on permanent field trip in the truck. So we've tried to eliminate those. What we have offered in return is for those folks who, you know, have difficulty navigating the carts altogether, maybe there's some disability there, or even somebody who's like, you know, having a surgery or something like that, if they need to sign up for a backdoor service, which is a specialized route, we have a driver who's consistently assigned to it. That person has a smaller route. That person has a smaller route, and they go up to the side of the house, and they collect that for them. So we're kind of trying to meet folks in the middle.
Sure.
However, we do understand that there are some places where there are size restrictions, and we'll do our best to accommodate.
And Chantel, the $25 swap fee, does that apply? Is it $25 for both recycling and trash? Is it 25 to cover both containers?
So it'd be $25 per container.
Okay, so 50 total.
Correct.
Okay, to swap out for the smaller versions.
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate that. Again, relatively minor thing, but it is important to some of our senior residents and those who may have some mobility issues or have difficulty getting the larger carts to the public street. Are there questions for our DPW Director or our guest from Waste Management? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Mine are just from, I'm glad we made these changes and the number of these additional corrections that are happening, I think will are great, good news about recycling. This is more for just budgeting for my own side and understanding. So this is going to be like about a 25% increase over the five years. And we're looking, and I was trying to understand, we're almost at two mils for our refuse millage that we've assigned for this. Where do we anticipate, is the growth in our potential tax base going to cover this, or will we need to consider a similar millage request to cover this going forward at some point?
You want to take that, Acting City Manager Cole?
Yes. My recommendation would be about a year from now, we do a look back where we've had about nine months of this contract to evaluate what the true costs are. At that point in time, sit back and look and see the need and evaluate.
Because I know, because I've been watching it increase over the last two years, and it's basically going up like 2/10 of a percent, so, or 2/10 of a mil each time. As it goes for WORMA, and, you know, we contribute, continue to contribute like $5,000 or whatever, how is that working? Are they working to go for a regional authority? Are they looking to continue? I mean, this worked well, I think, for negotiating and bringing about a better, you know, no offense, but a better deal for all of us. But what's happening with that? Because we were counting so much on the potential, another direction, and it hasn't happened.
Yeah, so I think there's still a lot of benefit to the WORMA group currently as things stand, having representatives from all of our neighboring communities that meet currently monthly. We're reevaluating that to see maybe if that needs to be bimonthly. However, there's a lot of discussion surrounding a lot of recycling, food waste, different things like that, and especially when discussing the whole industry as a whole, right? There's been a lot of, a lot of change and sudden change in the last year. And I think it's important for us to be on a unified front with our neighbors and understanding the different conflicts that we're all dealing with and trying to ensure that what we're asking is in the best interest of the county as a whole and not just us, and especially with all the different change going on. I think that's really what the group is now looking at, is ensuring we all understand what's changing in that stratosphere and making sure that we are asking, we're all asking the same thing of our trash haulers, whether that be Waste Management, whether that be Priority, whether that be Stevens, making sure that we're all getting the same levels of service regardless of how big or small our community is.
And everyone's still participating as part of Washington County, including Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti?
Yes. They are still, they are still present at those meetings. Today, I had, you had City of Ypsilanti, you had Ypsilanti Township, City of Dexter, City of Ann Arbor, SIO Township, ourselves. We're all still actively attending those meetings. It's just starting to still figure out what our new priorities are, again, with all of our neighbors now going out for either five-year renewals or bids for new five-year contracts, kind of putting that whole county bid together on pause for the moment and trying to realign and focus on what's important for each municipality at the moment.
And just a last question for you. You know, we've had this whole conversation about tipping fees and the concern about bringing in waste into Wayne County and all of that. Is there any potential where we may be impacted by that if tipping fees even go higher, or there's some concern to try and impact us?
Yeah, so we've been having ongoing conversations about the tipping fees. We have our own government staff, who, we actually have our own legislative person and a slew of people who are monitoring the situation and have close conversations with different decision-makers at that level. Because that tipping fee that is being proposed, you know, right now, we're looking at about 37-ish cents. That's a big leap to $5. We continue to monitor the situation, but, you know, for us, we have certain things that are built into the contract that will allow us to have conversations about what that looks like. You know, we, where it could possibly go, we really have no idea. But we are monitoring it closely, and we're doing our best to leverage, you know, the different mouthpieces that we have as not only WM, but also as an industry to advocate for the willingness is going to be the best interest of the residents of Michigan.
And this contract right now has some cushion in there for that potential?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Mr. Seal had his hand up, and I'll jump to Mayor Protem Dillon.
Thank you. Chantel, I had several questions, just to make sure I'm reading this contract right. We're still, each residence may still set out one pre-scheduled bulk item per weekly collection, right? Had no additional cost? Can we pay additional cost for three or more items?
Yep, so the first item is included in the cost, but we don't want to restrict folks if, you know, you're doing a clean-out or whatever that looks like, and you want to set out more, you do have the option to schedule that through customer experience or online, and you can prepay for those additional items to be collected.
Where would you, where would one prepay for those?
Yeah, so the city of Saline, we are working on building a community webpage, which is going to be kind of part of this new contract, that will have some widgets, use some self-service tools, so folks can actually go online and they could fill out a little digitized form that automatically adds up how many items they have, what their total would be, and they can pay via credit card right there. Otherwise, if folks prefer warm body, they can call into our Customer Experience Center. They have the option to go to a live agent, and that live agent can collect payment over the phone via credit card as well.
Okay, very good. And then the other question I had is about the Bagsters. Is that one of these big nylon bags that people?
It is. It's like a super duper shopping tote.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Protem Dillon?
Thank you. I'm going to follow up on what Mr. Seal just said, which is yard waste bags. Big change now is that we have unlimited bags, which is already very well-received. And then bulk pickup, I will say that personally using it, it is a very easy process. You call, you tell them, which you can actually go online, is what I did. And there's categories, you click a few buttons, boom, you schedule when you want it, they tell you where to put it, and by the magic of a big, of a big truck, it just disappears from your front property. So I really did appreciate that very much. The one question I do have, and it's something that I've asked, and nobody seems to have a definitive answer, and I just want to make sure it's not floating out in the universe somewhere, is that at one point, Saline area schools had come to this body and said, can we piggyback on your recycling? They were having an issue, and I don't know, we can't seem to find any formal agreements as to that. And so just wanting to ensure that those particular addresses are not included in our routes, that we're not picking up from their dumpsters.
Yeah, so I can double check on that, but I do believe, when I first started with WM about three years ago, that we were still doing some service at the schools that was considered part of the municipal agreement, and I do recall a definitive cutoff. So I will get with my operations partners to ensure that those are being done separately.
Thank you very much.
Actually, but in terms of like units and like inclusion and like billing and stuff, they're absolutely separate. But I'll make sure from a tonnage perspective that they're also separated.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
There's no questions, Councilmember Hama?
Just a question. Since we're doing away with the past, discontinuing the pass-through of the cost related to the processing, I just had a question about that. What impacts the processing? You said it fluctuates. What would impact the processing recycling rate?
Yeah, so at present, WM is relying on third-party recycling facilities. We've been bringing it to a third-party for the duration of this contract. It very excitedly, however, we have a new material recovery facility that is ours. It's state-of-the-art. It is going to be in the city of Detroit, and it is slated to be online the end of this year or the beginning of next. So when you're working with the third-party, you are subject to a third-party's rates, and basically what they tell you is what you're going to get. So by us being able to bring things in-house, we're going to be able to have a little bit more stability over that process. And we're also going to be able to leverage our consumer material recycling team. We have, prostitute or horn, we have the best post-consumer recycling marketing team in America in terms of, you know, getting rates and just ensuring that material is being as fully covered as possible, so.
So it's not fluctuated based on the quality that we're providing of the recycling, right? It's not, that's not part of the fluctuation?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. The other thing I wanted to ask, as the rates of trash go up 25% over the next five years, you know, 33% of the weight of the waste that goes into our garbage is food, and so where are we at and how does this impact curbside composting, which?
Yeah, curbside composting is, it continues to come up. You know, the city of Ann Arbor has had a pilot program for many years, and they see limited participation. It's certainly something that WM is exploring in different market areas where there's more of a demand. We, as Michigan, as a state, that, you know, kind of a Midwest region, we're still really trying to get folks over that recycling hurdle. That being said, for folks who do have food scrap that they would like to get rid of in a composting fashion, folks can put orange peels, coffee grounds, things of that nature in their yard waste bins. The stipulation is that 10% of any load that, you know, we deliver to our composting facility, it can't exceed that 10% ratio in food waste to compost. So there is some opportunity for folks who do want to do that. I don't, we'd really have to have a whole lot of folks gung-ho to get 10% of a truck to food scrap, but there is that option for folks who would like to pursue that path. In terms of us here, Waste Management of Michigan Incorporated, doing composting, I think that we're probably still quite a few years away from that food organics and that scrap. But we're always, you know, having different conversations with folks to see how we can leverage that. One of the ways we've done it with the city of Ann Arbor's commercial services is we've worked with MyBrain Michigan to at least have some of that offering available to our commercial customers.
So curbside pickup as a citywide is not on the horizon with Waste Management over the next five years in this contract?
I would think probably over the next five years, no. Things can change, certainly, but we're really, really heavily focused on getting folks aligned with recycling and helping meet some of those stakeholders that we have for recycling participation right now.
Any additional questions? Chantel, thank you very much. Mr. Director Hopola, thank you very much as well. Appreciate your leadership on this. We do have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Seal, simply to acknowledge receipt of the memorandum from our DPW Director. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve the negotiated five-year contract proposal with Waste Management for Refuge and Recycling Services?
Move to approve.
Oh, boy.
Give it to him.
Yeah, we'll give Janet, Janet, or Mayor Protem Dillon, excuse me, will be the mover. Councilmember Lesh will be the second. Is there any additional discussion or debate on the motion? They'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of a motion approved, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. Chantel, thank you. Appreciate your patience tonight. Thank you for your attendance. We are going to transition to agenda item 25-110, CWA contract. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memorandum from Community Development Director Edkin and to approve or not to approve the proposed three-year agreement for building department consulting services with Carlisle-Wortman Associates, CWA, for rates provided in Exhibit B of the agreement to authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Seal to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Lesh. Director Edkin, would you like to begin?
Yeah, as you know, we're going through some bigger changes than the building department, and we're currently under temporary contract with CWA until the end of this month. This contract would begin July 1 and run until 2028, fiscal year 27, 28. As stated in the recommendation that fees and rates are in Exhibit B, there is an increase each year, I believe it's right around 4% each year. Numbers that I have run based on the previous year's inspections and what's been, excuse me, paid out, this would be cost savings of about $52,000 per year, even with the increase. And currently, we're doing about $45 per inspection. Their rate is, I believe, right around $80 to begin, and that's just under $53,000 in savings. And that's based on 2098, almost 2,100 inspections per year. Now, we are eliminating some inspections. We are also taking some inspections that we do moving over to our code compliance officer. They don't require building license for those, things like final site inspections, sign inspections that don't require electrical, sidewalk frame or forms, driveways, things of that, like that. We're also removing some inspections that we currently do that are not required by the state, like foundation, open roof, house wraps, if somebody's going to recite their house. So those are going to be eliminated. We're still going to do finals on those, not on the driveways or sidewalks, because once the concrete's down, it's there, we're just going to make sure that it's not deliberately being drained into the neighboring property. We'll be able to absorb some of the building inspections. Currently, Craig Strong works here Mondays and Wednesdays, and he does building inspections when he's here. Sometimes if he's passing through and there's one on his way, he'll stop by and have a look at that. Our mechanical and plumbing inspector, Ryan Miller, has been filling in for a number of years now. He's also, works with CWA part-time. He's employed by Washington County. Same with Joe Fleece, he's our electrical inspector. And they've, they're familiar with the city. They've been around for quite some time. But CWA will keep them on board and work with them. So additionally, they're going to do an audit of the permit fees. The permit fee for building inspections has not, right now, we're charging $25 per permit. That doesn't include additional cost. It's based on the project cost for new house, but that has not been updated since 2015. So they're going to do a full audit of those, to be consistent with the ICC standards, instead of taking just a couple of communities of like-size within the state. This is going to be national, and so it'll be a little more consistent with where we are. I'd say, right now, we're probably about half the cost of what most communities are just for the permit fee. So it'll be, they'll be offset some of the costs as well, so that $52,000 in savings may increase as well. So, but we've worked with CWA, they've been part of the community. I think Dick Carlisle, who started, has been here since 1990s, and they do our rental inspections, they do our permit reviews, that's part of it, in the fees and rates, but they do our building reviews right now, so that cost is going to be pushed through to the developer or the applicant, so that's not going to, you're not going to see any change there.
Thank you. Mr. Radzik is a representative from Carlisle-Wortman Associates. Is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
Good evening.
Evening.
I'll be super brief. We very much appreciate the opportunity to provide these services for the city. Our staff has been working with Al Cole and Chris Hattin now for, I think, at least a month, maybe two months. And everything, I echo everything Chris said. We're in agreement with Chris and Al that there are significant efficiencies to be found in the processes of the building department, as well as the soft-skill relationships with the community and the building department, and we are dedicated to help to make that happen.
Very good. Why don't you hang tight there at the podium, Mr. Radzik? Just in the event that there are questions. Just in the event that there are questions that are best addressed by you. Mr. Rad, can I, can I ask two questions? And these are primarily, actually, they're exclusively for the public's benefit, which is, one, obviously, members of our community are going to want to know that the service is going to be maintained in quality or improved, so perhaps you can speak to that. And then secondarily, if this is determined not to be the best fit for the city of Celine, what are our recourse in the ensuing months or years?
The services will increase. Right now, we are, with Craig being onboard, doing, he'll do inspections up to five days a week. Same with plumbing and mechanical, we're trying to get that to at least four days a week. Electrical, Joe is available at any time, so he'll do Monday through Friday without any issue there. As far as recourse, we probably go out and look for full-time employees, which is not easy to come by in the trades anymore. They're kind of dying breed, where there's going to be a big gap for a number of years until there's enough out there to work full-time. But the overall savings here is also for, you know, benefits and defer compensation and things like that, so there's, it's a win-win, in my opinion.
Appreciate that. Thank you for sharing that for the public record. Other questions, comments for Director Adkin or for our guest from Carlisle-Wortman? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Actually, maybe for both of you, could you kind of understand, or help me understand the appeal process and interpretation? So we have an individual gets an inspection and they don't agree with you, or they don't agree with our building or something. How will that work out? Because I know that's where we've run into some concerns in the past.
In case of building inspections, most of it will go through Craig, and then he can defer any comment to electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. But we've got Craig some business cards, his personal cell phone's on there. He'll answer any calls or emails throughout the day at any time, even if, whether or not he's here.
And should it level up to another concern, or whatever, it goes from you to you and then whatever other resource?
Well.
Or how, or your company?
Our office to Craig. If we can't answer it, then from there, either Mike, well, Brett.
Dean, are you referring to someone wanting to appeal a decision?
Yeah, exactly. Appeal a decision, or they're concerned with something. How does that all play out and how do you address that?
We're, in the ordinance right now, we do have a building code board of appeals, and we're, Craig and I have had discussions about getting that up and running again, so that if, building code of appeals, and then from there, I believe it'll probably go on to the state. But yeah, they're, they go in front of a three-person panel, I believe, to discuss it.
I don't anticipate, I, just because those are things, and I wanted to make sure that we have that kind of thing put in place and whatever we need to do to make sure that we get the most public input or whatever we need to have at that point.
Yeah, and it goes from condemnations, demolitions, anything that they want to appeal.
I'm sorry, it's kind of a two-pronged issue.
Yeah.
As far as the building code goes, we're enforcing the state law. And state building code has very specific appeal processes that are included in there, and so the city is obligated to follow those processes. But a lot of folks don't realize, in order to file an appeal under the building code, you have to essentially believe and have evidence that the code official has interpreted the code incorrectly. Not that you just don't like it, or they didn't let me do what I want to do, or so on and so forth.
Exactly.
It's more of a technical thing. And then if the person is unhappy with the code official's decision on that, they can appeal to the local city construction code board of appeals. And if they don't like that answer, they can elevate it to Lansing, to the state construction board of appeals, and finally assert to court that they're unhappy with that. But as far as the softer side of this conversation, our firm and our, we have a very aggressive policies for customer service. We strongly believe in customer service. Sometimes people want to build something that may not exactly meet the letter of the code, but if the code official determines that it meets the spirit and intent and it's safe, they can, they have the authority and the discretion to approve that. And in concert, and in, you know, consultation with Chris's office, we would bend over backwards. As long as it's safe and it meets the spirit and intent of the code, it can be allowed to occur. If it absolutely is unsafe, it doesn't meet any of that criteria, we would hold firm for the safety of the residents of the city, whether it's somebody's home or a business that the general public would be, you know, into, and exposed to something that wasn't safe. But we try very, very hard to build relationships. Our company has been built on long-term relationships. We're not a flash-in-the-pan firm. Most of our clients have been with us for 20 to 40, so in one, a couple of cases, almost 50 years now. So we try to work cooperatively with the city staff to make sure the residents and the people that are applying and receiving permits are adequately serviced and that the community is safe.
Okay. And I know that's one of the things our community is requesting, and so making sure that that's how we approach it. And I anticipated that from the contract. I just want to know what those steps are, should we, and need to do something on our side. So understanding that board of appeals and everything sounds like.
Precisely. And I would just like to add just one more thing that you may or may not realize to benefit the city. In most cases, when a smaller, medium-sized city contracts out services with inspectors, either a trade inspector or a building inspector, and Chris is right, there's not that many of them to go around right now. There's just shy of 1,800 local governments in the state of Michigan, between cities, villages, and townships. Not nearly, not even a fraction of that number of building officials available to service them. So these types of arrangements are not uncommon, they're becoming more and more common. But one of the benefits you get when we provide inspectors, they're coming with our liability insurance and the backing of our, our legal consultants and so on and so forth. Whereas if you just, you hire a, say, a plumbing inspector and you're paying them a certain amount of money for every inspection, I can almost guarantee they're not coming to you covered with that level of commercial and professional liability insurance that you will get from us, whether it's a full or part-time person. All of our inspectors are either full or part-time employees. We don't tend to deny anybody.
And I'm glad to read that you were doing a quarterly reporting to us in terms of information, so we understand exactly what's happening.
Yes.
So that's helpful. And then lastly, I know the new building codes or whatever's happening at the state, do we have any concerns with that, or however this will be rolling out, or that's just still up in the air in terms of what they're doing?
The state finally adopted the 2021 Michigan Building Code. I think it was effective in February or March.
April. Yeah, yeah. And I think with the, the green area, I think that's where the potential lawsuit was from the contractors. I think they've moved past that.
And for me, just one last, how will you promote yourself, get yourself out there so our community sees who you are, knows what you are, how you provide, and your goal is safety and protecting the public and making sure? And I think that's one of the things that we need to be better at doing that, how we can communicate that with our community and working with our communications consultant and everything else going forward would be very much appreciated.
And our goal is to be, to the public, it should be seamless. If we're there, we're representing the cities, and we would represent the city based upon your principles and your requirements.
Excellent.
Your expectations.
Thank you.
Just in the short time that they've been, that Craig's been here, I think, a month maybe or so, that's, the feedback's been tremendous.
Positive.
Thank you.
Additional questions for either our guest, Mr. Radzik, or Community Development Director? Is there any subsequent discussion on the motion? Sound that's been made by CEO, seconded by Lesh. Motion is to acknowledge and to approve. Then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. As I have it, the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Radzik, thank you very much. Have a good evening. Appreciate your patience. We move on to agenda item 25-110, Celine Area Fire Department Fire Service Report Waiver. So we'll actually be seeking a motion to postpone to a date certain of July 7th, 2025, to consider both the waiver and a formal presentation from our consultants, noting that the presentation is not yet complete as of 5:00 PM this, this evening.
So moved?
Moved by Mayor Potem Dillon. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lesh. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. As I have it, the motion carries unanimously. This will be both a presentation and an enumerated action item on our July 7th, 2025 agenda. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is reports, other announcements, including board updates, updates from commissions, committees, or task forces. Again, I'll start to my far left and end to, or excuse me, start to my far right and end to my left. Mr. Lesh, any reports, announcements, boards, commission, or committee updates?
The arts and culture, Jazz in the Park is coming up within about a month. They're actively seeking businesses to help fund said events, so if you could check the Facebook website for the arts and culture, that would be great. We appreciate it.
Very good. Councilmember CEO?
Just two things. We successfully completed our visit with the German guests from Sister City last Friday when most of them flew home. I think all had a good time. We had a, thanks to Celine Main Street, we had a nice farewell dinner up at the 109 on Wednesday evening. Everybody packed into the room and we had a, we had a great evening. There was a lot of, a lot of conversation. There was a few adult beverages consumed and a good deal of good food from, from Breckton Grill. So thanks to all involved. Thank you, Mary, for your kind generosity and allowing us to use the space, and I think the Germans greatly enjoyed it. And the other thing was, there was a meeting this morning of the, I think of the Celine Area Senior Center. I was unable to attend because I was at a funeral up at the church, and they're now meeting at Woodland School in the interim while the construction begins in the old space at the old Celine Junior High School, on the senior center space. So right now, they're meeting in their classes at Woodland School. Just, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Dillon?
No, no reports.
Councilmember Gearbaugh?
Just a couple. To help everyone, Deep Home, we've had a very success with that. Now it's to the union being reviewed, and hopefully ratification will come back to us. I strongly encourage any members of our council to talk to Acting City Manager Cole if they have any questions regarding what has been discussed and how it's moving forward. Planning this past week, met with, well, Craig Feman approached us with an use of the property that we recently sold for a special use in terms of configuring it. We've approved it moving forward. That's connected with Arrow Energy. One of the things that was a concern that came up was some of the landscaping, but it's a, their plan is to service a lot of their fleet of trucks and so forth, and semis and that type, and they're coming out of Ohio to make their headquarters kind of here. And Arrow Energy has been a contributing business to our community for decades, and looking forward to that. One of the concerns, though, was they were trying to figure out how to build this parking lot and everything, potentially using asphalt filings, I think they're called, milling, sorry, I made a mistake on that. And instead, may need to use hard service or defer some of the parking. So when they come to us, really, the concern right now will then move on to the preliminary and final site plan, and their use seems to be adequate. We may look at, looking at incentives for them from development or abatements that might help them offset the cost of moving and upgrading to a better approach. Asphalt millings are really discouraged along any kind of wetlands or DNR, I mean, Eagle-related concerns. We will also have, June 21st, the sheep are actually at the farm. So we are open on the third Saturday of every month from noon to 3:00. We encourage you to come on out. July 5th, the depot will have a celebration for the 4th of July from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. And just, I sent you all a notice, we lost the big apple tree out at the farm behind the farmhouse. It split, and unfortunately, when they looked at it, it was just completely rotted in the middle, and so the rest of it had to come down to protect the other buildings and potentially safety of any visitors. So it's lost, but things have to be moving forward, and at least we were safe when it, when it fell. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice, announcements or updates from boards, committees, commissions, or task forces?
Parks Commission meets tomorrow, but one thing I do want to highlight is that the Pollinator Garden in Risen Park was planted over the weekend, so thanks to the volunteers who helped plant that, and can't wait to watch that grow and see the community interact with it. So if you're in the area of, of North Ann Arbor and Pleasant Ridge?
Yes. Yep, Pleasant Ridge.
Take a peek at that. You know, they're all little baby plants now, but they'll grow throughout the summer. So that, that's a really nice asset to the community. I want to thank Jill Estrada, who was the precipice for getting the grant for that project, to get that project going. Other than that, we meet tomorrow evening, so feel free to join us at 7:00 PM right here in these chambers.
Very good. Councilmember Harmout?
Yes, last week, the Historic District Commission met, and just to remind everybody, our historic districts are the North and South Ann Arbor and East Henry. And we had a individual that came to discuss plans for, you know, for some renovations. And I just wanted to make a statement out here. It's really helpful to make sure if you're bringing anything to the Historic District Commission, to make sure you bring information regarding specific materials and dimensions, and that will definitely help speed things along. So thank you.
Very good. If there are no additional announcements, we'll transition to our third item under discussion, which is city manager hiring. Let me, let me begin, and then there might be a motion, and we'll see if we can develop consensus on how best to move forward. I did want to report out first on the special meeting that was called of the Hiring Committee last Thursday. Contrary to some false and misleading information that has been shared on social media and online, the genesis for that meeting was thoughtfully and thoroughly explained last Thursday afternoon. On the advice of legal counsel and based on current case law, it was suggested to us that we convene a public meeting and take a formal vote forwarding our four finalists to city council. It was a very brief meeting. Minutes were maintained. Recording is going to be preserved in perpetuity if anyone would like to listen to it. And the four finalists were yet again confirmed and unanimously discharged to city council based on the members that were present. And those finalists again are Mr. Psoms, Mr. Trembley, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Swallows. I want to talk just a moment about the process. Again, city council retained earlier this winter a consultant and established a hiring committee. I thought the consultant performed very well, and I greatly appreciate the contributions made by every member of the committee. We developed a very thoughtful, very inclusive, and very clear community profile and job description, which was advertised and promoted on a variety of platforms. As I mentioned previously, we had 47 applicants. Probably 12 to 15 could be considered by any objective, reasonable measure, good to great. Of those 12, each were interviewed by the consultant, and then that was the thrust of our conversation when the Hiring Committee previously met, because again, we were charged with reducing the number down to four. We were simply an advisory body. City council can accept or reject our recommendations, but our, our charge was to reduce it to between two to four finalists. We did that, and I think we forwarded and subsequently interviewed four very interesting and unique gentlemen for the position. The skill set and the acumen experience that our next permanent city manager possesses is of critical importance. We need somebody who's great and excels at interfacing with the broader community, resolving constituent and business inquiries, and being an excellent ambassador and spokesperson for the community. We also need somebody who's effective at managing the day-to-day operations of the community, and that means successfully onboarding and recruiting staff, holding staff accountable, but also giving them the resources, time, and space to excel in their respective roles. And also, you know, building a constructive and cohesive team. We're also looking for someone with emotional intelligence and the right temperament. We're looking for the best fit. And again, we had many exceptional candidates apply with great skill and acumen. I articulated this last Thursday at the Hiring Committee, but it's my recommendation at this juncture that we proceed with another round of interviews, but reduce the candidates further and invite back Mr. Smith, the city manager of Belleville, and Mr. Swallows, the city manager of Tecumseh. I'm becoming, it's becoming increasingly clear to me that one of these two gentlemen will be the best ideal fit to lead our city long-term. Although I do have some additional questions that I would like to ask, and I think a number of my colleagues here would like to ask some, some additional questions as well. Let me further add that I think it's important that leaders work to de-escalate situations and build broad coalitions within the community. I'm keenly aware that not everyone is going to agree with this decision, but we must accept the finality of it whenever that occurs. And great organizations, great communities rally around their, their leaders when appropriate and support, or try to support, the majority decision once made. And it's in everybody's best interest that the next city manager be successful, that that individual be embraced and given time and space to produce tangible results that impact the quality of life within, within the Celine community. So again, my position is, is pretty clear. I would like to invite back Mr. Smith and Mr. Swallows for I would like to invite back Mr. Smith and Mr. Swallows for another round of, of interviews, and I'm hoping that can transpire next week. I'd like to be able, I'd like to be in a position where this body feels comfortable making a conditional offer by the close of business next week. And I'd like to invite my colleagues along with myself to develop questions that we can send to our consultants within the next two days, which can be asked of these candidates at a public open house likely to be scheduled or ideally to be scheduled next Monday or Tuesday. And I, excuse me, happy to address any questions or outstanding concerns that individuals have. Would anybody like to have the floor or would anybody like to make a, a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion. First of all, I want to make a statement. So I really do appreciate my fellow council members that were part of this process. I was not on this hiring subcommittee and I also understand what you're saying is trust. My problem is, is that we need to be able to trust, but also verify the details and the logic behind the decision. And I asked, and I asked, and I asked, and I never really received the answers about really how we evaluated and weighted and the criteria that we set for the city manager that we wanted to hire. And I hear great, and I don't see that great is a unit of measurement. So I would like to make a motion to add our current acting city manager to the list of candidate and immediately schedule a special meeting to answer questions that the other four candidates had a opportunity to answer and to be considered for the position of city manager for the city of Celine.
I second that motion.
Well, I get clarification on the motion. So the motion, I just want to understand the intent of the motion. So the motion is to just invite, or to invite the acting city manager to a, a round of interviews?
I would like to extend the, what we had extended to the other four candidates, the same questions, to be able to provide the same allotted amount of time to answer the questions that were posed by the other four candidates that were brought about.
Okay, so the-
And I would say an interview similar to what was, I agree with you and support in terminating, and you can say interview or special meeting, which is consistent with what we had done.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is second. So you want to ask the same questions that have already been asked and known publicly to the acting city manager at a special meeting?
Correct, those were the same.
I'd like to say that based on the abundance of community response that we've gotten and the non-answer as far as how the criteria was weighted and evaluated, I think that we maybe are not in alignment with what the community is wanting. And I would like to have more opportunity to add the current acting city manager to the candidate list.
Okay, that motion is in order, it has been properly seconded. I do want to clear up some misinformation, however. I did email the entire group the criterion metrics that I used to make the determination. That email would have been sent to you on May the 19th at 10:57 a.m.
The information that I received does not identify how the criteria was weighted, how it was measured, and evaluated from a quantifiable-
Okay, but that, but that's different than not providing it. So I just want to make that clear for the record. You may, you, hold on. You may disagree with my judgment and the metrics that were used, but I provided that to you almost a month ago. So I just want to be clear on that. Again, you may not like it, you may disagree with the conclusion I reached, you may question and impugn my, my judgment, which is fine, but that information was provided to you, again, a date specific, May the 19th at 10:57 a.m.
Information that I was provided was not what I have requested in its totality. Thank you.
Okay, well, I respectfully disagree. Go ahead, Councilmember Rice.
I also respectfully disagree. I also believe that our consultant answered the questions over email and I answered the questions verbally to the best of my ability, so as not to break the Open Meetings Act over email. We had a lengthy discussion and there's a difference between not answering a question and not being able to interpolate the answer to a question. We have, we all have different ways of going about our decision-making process and, and our, my colleague, Ms. Harmout, has a fantastic way of going about her decision-making process. However, that was not the way that the committee made a decision, that was not the way that I made a decision, that was not the, the way that the mayor made a decision. So there is a difference between not liking the way that we went about it and not receiving the information. But I am fully confident that I have given as much information as I can possibly give.
Additional discussion on the, the motion that's on the floor? Ms. Dillon and Mr. Seal?
Thank you. As far as receiving information, I think that was the genesis of the motion a couple of meetings ago, where we had asked, there were certain council members that had asked for the Hiring Committee to come forward to just sort of explain, we did not need the details, but to understand the process in which it was used to rank, or to rank the candidates to bring forward. We have subsequently received some information and even that is not clear in how certain candidates were brought forward.
Mr. Seal?
Thank you, Your Honor. My belief was that as a, as a council, we delegated the authority to the committee that was appointed to come forward with the four candidates. They did so. I have full faith and confidence in the judgment that they used to make the decision that they brought forth and I'd be voting against this proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Girbom?
As was one of the results from the session, closed session and coming back into public, we were, the public was told that the council would receive materials this last week, which we received this past Saturday, to consider and review. While I cannot talk about the information specifically on there, where, because confidentially was extended to the candidates, there is information in there which I have reviewed the materials presented to us by our attorney via the Hiring Committee and our consultant. Based upon information provided, I'm perplexed as to what specific documentation, notes, or summary analysis led to the decision. Further, during interviews and from subsequent discussions, public information is inconsistent with the four candidates that were presented. Factors which included city manager experience, gaps in employment, and whether deadlines were extended based on actions by the consultant. As there is ambiguity among factors considered within just the documentation presented, I am requesting El Cole be added to the list of candidates to interview. For me personally, based upon having worked directly with her in the capacity as council representative to risk, finance, audit, and the transition team, I am satisfied she meets the minimum requirements and with her practical and relevant experience meets the additional requirements desired of the preferred final candidates. Based on her demonstrated time with our city, her ability to bring about policy change, her attention and results to effectively assess and resolve the many aspects, excuse Her attention and results to assess, patiently assess and resolve the many aspects of our budget and financial reporting, maximize our investments, address HR matters, resolve concerns, successfully negotiate labor contracts, assure audit compliance, and successfully reestablish both dormant and broken relationships for the betterment of our city. While the committee has directed to recommend candidates as was stated in the meeting held last Thursday, as a member of the group reminded those in attendance, their recommendations were only advisory. Unfortunately, it is up to us as council members, ultimately, it is up to us as council members to take into consideration all information presented. However, it is the initial stages of candidate consideration. The hiring team is not to use information not readily available to the public. I'm aware of statements and comments that have been made by members of the Hiring Committee to the general public and have the appearance of breaching not only this responsibility, but again, that of our employee in this recruitment. I therefore support this motion.
I will vote against the motion. I, as I mentioned previously, I, I believe in having fidelity and faith in the processes and protocols that we establish. And so I think that this process should run its course. We should interview the two finalists who I previously mentioned. If at the conclusion of an additional round of interviews, it's determined that neither one of them would be a good fit, I would be happy to talk about alternative options. And I think if there was a compromise to be broached, while I, I'm not sure I would be inclined to support it, I think the more appropriate motion to, to offer from the floor would be to include an external candidate along with the, along with two other finalists, ideally the ones that I mentioned, for a subsequent round of interviews. Of course, that's not the motion that, that has been, been offered. I think that would have been more reasonable, more palatable, but for the reasons I just articulated, I'll be voting no on the motion. Moved by Harmout, seconded by Girbom. Additional discussion before we vote? Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. Just is, for an opportunity for clarification, so is the motion currently on the floor to just bring Ms. Cole in for an interview within the same format that we had used for the previous candidates?
That's my understanding, yes.
That is. If the motion would be like to be amended to include the other two, that would be fine.
I'm not making that motion.
I would, I'll, I'll move to amend the motion.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, so the amendment's going to be the proceeding, proceeding motion. So, so I want to just be clear on, you want to state or do you want me to state?
No, 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 I just want to make sure that I sort of clarified to make sure before Mr. Girbom seconds what I'm saying is that I do think that bringing back whatever candidates are still in consideration, extending an invitation to Ms. Cole for an interview, and starting with a new set of questions that would be new and fresh to all candidates.
Correct. So I just want to be clear, though, because you're the one that's making the motion. So you can include whomever, whomever you please. So are you suggesting that, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth.
No, I can, yeah, go ahead.
Are you suggesting to invite back Mr. Smith, Mr. Swallows, and now to include, extend an invitation to Acting City Manager Cole?
Yes, I would include Mr. Smith, Mr. Swallows, and Ms. Cole.
Okay. You accept that as a friendly amendment? Okay, Mr. Girbom, obviously, the second or both, you accept that as a friendly amendment? Okay. So let me defer back to the city clerk. Clerk Royal, are you clear then on the modified motion that's on the floor?
I am, but as a friendly amendment, do I need to have Dillon as the mover?
If it's, if it's a friendly, if, if they accepted Ms. Dillon's suggestion, remember both the mover and seconder did, again, for the record, will modify the language without objection.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I got lost in it.
If you wouldn't mind, for the public's benefit and for the council's benefit, repeating that motion. And I think Ms. Dillon used the word invite deliberately. Is that correct, Mayor Potem Dillon?
Extended invite.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Go ahead, Clerk Royal.
Have to invite the two candidates, Mr. Psoms and Mr. Swallows.
No, no, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, City Manager of Belleville, Mr. Swallows, City Manager of Tecumseh.
And invite Ms. Cole to interview at a new meeting.
At, at a subsequent special meeting to, to be scheduled in the very near future. Ideally, early next week. Okay? Good with that?
Yes.
Good with that, Mr. Girbom? Okay, so we have a slightly modified motion on the floor. I would welcome discussion or comment on the motion.
Okay. I just want to make a, I have some questions anyway. Since, effing deep, we extend an invitation to Ms. Cole to interview, we're going to have to come up with a whole new set of questions because having an internal candidate versus external candidates, you know, you can't really ask the same questions for every internal versus external. Who is going to, I mean, is this body going to come up with all the questions? Are we going to use our consultant to come up with questions?
So here would be my suggestion, and Mayor Potem Dillon can correct me if I'm wrong because I briefly talked to her about this early this afternoon. I would recommend, and I can follow up the email first thing tomorrow morning, and I'm speaking from my own perspective here, there's, there's several questions that I thought of in the past two weeks that I would like to ask of finalists. So my recommendation would be between Tuesday and the close of business Wednesday, that council members send suggested questions to our consultant, April. She can reformat them and then assign them. You don't even need to develop them in, in the final language. If you just give her a theme or an idea, I'm sure she can craft that. But my suggestion would be for all council to submit, if you're so inclined, two to four questions that could be asked, that, that could be reformatted and then sent to us later this week and assigned, similar to what we did at the first round of interviews two and a half weeks ago. Okay? Is that a pretty clear reflection of our conversation today? Okay, very good. Any additional questions or comments, Mr. Lesh? No? Councilmember Rice, please.
As a member of the Hiring Committee, we came out with a unanimous decision. However, as I've stated for about three weeks now from when this first conversation started is that if my council colleagues wanted to put forth something different, I would support that, simply because we are a council and we're making the best decision for the city. What has, what has happened over the last few weeks was, in my opinion, completely unnecessary because this could have happened a few Mondays ago and we could have moved forward very quickly and very cordially. However, that is not what happened. I will still stand by what I said from the initial get-go, is that if my council colleagues wanted to go about this in a different way, I would continue to support that. So I will support this tonight with the caveat that I was part of a unanimous decision from a Hiring Committee. However, in, you know, to remain cooperative with my council colleagues, you know, as a council moving forward, I think this is a fairly decent decision for us to do so that we can, you know, collaboratively work on these things together. It's unfortunate that there is this gray cloud over top of it, but I will support my colleagues today.
Any additional discussion? Let me just say, I, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Seal?
I need a moment to collect my thoughts.
Well, if you want me to come back to you, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Okay. Were there any additional comments from the dais? Let me say, Mr. Girbom, go ahead.
I appreciate for clarification, Mayor, on the, the motion that we made. I think the intent was just to make sure that we did this interview with the three of them, so I appreciate that.
No, and I appreciate you and Councilmember Harmout and Mayor Potem Dillon offering a more palatable motion. And I, I do want to say for the record, however, that I am likely a, a no vote on the motion. That is, is, is before us. However, if there is a agreement from the majority to proceed in this direction, I will obviously conduct myself in a, in a professional manner, as I, as I hope I always do, and give every candidate who accepts the invitation a, a fair shot come, when we, when we interview our finalists. I, I do want to add, though, for the public record, that I think it's important to be upfront and honest on these types of issues. Foundationally, leadership is grounded in telling people the truth. Not placating, not infantilizing, not telling you what you want to hear, but telling you the truth as I see it and what I'm willing to do and what I'm not willing to do. I have fidelity and faith in the process that we, we established. I'm in favor of moving forward and doing a subsequent round of interviews with two of the individuals if they accept the invitation, but if the majority feels different, I look forward to a, a robust dialogue with any and all participants in, in subsequent interviews for this very important position. Thank you. Mr. Seal?
I just don't want what I say to be seen as a repudiation of the fine work that I think that Acting City Manager Cole has done in the interim. But again, I do believe in the faith, or I have full faith and confidence in the work that was done by the committee that we delegated to do the work on our behalf. And to, again, now go back on that, I think is to express some dissatisfaction with the work that's been done. So I too will be voting against this proposal.
Any additional discussion? And again, we're all clear on the motion. Okay? Very good. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay. Show of hands there. Who are the ayes? I think it was five to two. All in favor, okay? Imposed, motion passes, five to two. Thank you very much. If there's, so I will, we will follow up tomorrow, hopefully get a date early next week. And I would actually like to convene a special meeting maybe later in the week to consider a conditional offer and also to consider the T-POM agreement because I think it would be very advantageous to get that approved so we don't have to deal with any kind of retroactivity come, come our, if we deal with it at our next regular meeting, which is on July the 7th.
We may have some more confirmation statements before the T-POM thing happens, but once that happens, I agree, that probably would be the thing. Do you agree, Acting City Manager Cole, on that?
Yeah, we, we certainly can bring it forward if, if a special meeting, but on the 7th, it's within the same period that I joined the paper.
Okay, okay.
There's no danger.
Okay.
We talked about that this morning. Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, yeah. Probably latter part of next week. So, and I will also, so we'll try to confirm dates by the close of business tomorrow. We'll confirm whether all of the invited parties are still interested and willing to participate. And then I will encourage you in writing to submit questions to April directly, ideally before the close of business on Wednesday. About two to four questions per person, if you, if you wouldn't mind, again, if you just want to give her general themes or ideas, I think that would be, I think that would be suitable. We'll try to disseminate those by Friday, and if there's a particular question that you would like to ask, we would, we would welcome that feedback. Any questions from me, then? Okay. Our last item was added by Mr. Girbom, which is Board of Ethics.
And then I just kind of wanted, I have a little statement. Our Board of Ethics, I'm requesting our Ethics Committee be convened to review a number of issues related to operation, council actions, and other aspects recently identified and brought forward to the Risk Management Advisory Group. This action is what I think at a minimum will be a demonstration in our willingness as a council to bring about daylight and rebuild trust within our community.
I have no objection. My only concern would be, and this will be a question for Acting City Manager Cole, do we have all of the positions on our Ethics Board filled?
Yes. Lori Champion, Paul Heinecke, and Matt Schneider at this time.
Those were recent appointments this year, so.
Okay. All right. So remind council then of the protocol. So remind council then of the protocol. If a council member or individual on staff wants certain issues addressed, they are to document those in writing and then forward it to, who is the staff liaison to, to the city clerk? Okay?
And I can do that.
Okay. If you want to document, if you want to document your concerns, share those with the city clerk, CC, city council, the clerk can obviously attempt to organize an Ethics Board meeting in a not-too-distant future.
And I believe, and perhaps Mr. Lash can also help on this in terms of concerns being on the Risk Management.
Very good. Okay. If there's nothing further pertaining to that discussion item, we come then to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time and make comment to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Those who wishing to speak are requested, but of course not required to state their name and address for the record. Please note, council generally does not answer questions, but if it's a, if it's something that's easily addressed and I can alleviate your concerns or my colleagues can alleviate your concerns, we'll try, try our best to, to assuage whatever issue is vexing you. You'll have three minutes once you begin.
I would just like to thank councilmembers Lash, Dillon, Gearball, Rice and Harmout for listening to the concerns of our community and supporting the motion to adjourn.
Additional citizen comments? Again, you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Hello, I just wanted to say the same thing. Thank you so much for listening to your constituents and stakeholders.
Any additional citizen comments? Any written comments provided in, in advance of tonight's meeting, which the individual wanted their remarks at at this time?
Not that I have an argument.
Let me just make one comment. We do greatly appreciate everybody who's chimed in on, on these and any other issues. I just want to be crystal clear for the record. I hear the voices, I understand and I appreciate your, your perspective. I just have a respectful disagreement. It's not a matter of listening or not listening, it's just a matter of disagreeing. And I think that in, in public policy debates, good people can, can respectfully disagree. So that's all I have to add this evening. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:28 unless there are additional issues to be brought before suddenly city council.
So.